I want you down here. We add this to our list. Put it down as low. I've never seen one for me.
Yes. Yep. You got your.
I'm leaving my.
We just buried my bag here.
That's our carry on. I'll call that a carry on.
All right, well, I'm leaving my carry on. I got my water.
All right, we have an excellent connection. We are live.
Or live.
So I shouldn't do the.
Dance. I remember it's five to ten minutes to five.
Get the intro right at five because, you know.
It's fine.
Yes, I don't want.
Well, we can tell them that.
What movie?
Tell them.
I'm going to go on stories, but.
Just tell them that Pat Green.
This is the, it's Tavion. The board production meeting.
Can somebody, can somebody shut off that?
And it's official because he has it on screen.
Oh. Close that mic on. Turn it off.
And if you'll notice, I'm not asking what are you going to do? But who are you going to be? I'm asking you about how you plan to live your life every day. How are you going to respond when you don't get that job you had your heart set on? For all of you who are going to be teachers, what are you going to do? If the students in your class next year just don't respond to your lessons? For all of you going into business, how will you react when your boss gives you a goal that feels way too high? See, these are the moments that define us. Not the day you get the promotion, not the day you win teacher of the year, but the times that force you to claw and scratch and fight just to get through the day. The moments when you get knocked down and you're wondering whether it's even worth it to get back up. See, those are the times when you've got to ask yourself, who am I going to be? And I want to be clear, this isn't just some vague platitude about building character. In recent years, we've actually been seeing a growing body of research that shows that skills like resilience and conscientiousness can be just as important to your success as your test scores or even your IQ. For instance, West Point cadets who scored high on things like grit and determination were more likely to complete basic training than those who ranked high on things like class rank, SAT scores, and physical fitness. So what we're seeing is that if you're willing to dig deep, if you're willing to pick yourself up when you fall, if you're willing to work and work until your weaknesses become your strengths, then you'll develop a set of skills that you can mold and apply to any situation you encounter, any job you might have, any crisis you might confront. But you've got to make that choice. And let me just share just a little secret before I end. As someone who has hired and managed hundreds of young people over the course of my career, whether it was during my time as a lawyer, as an administrator, as a university, a nonprofit manager, even now as first lady, I have never once asked someone I was interviewing to explain a test score or a grade in a class. Never. I have never once made a hire just because someone went to an Ivy League school instead of a state school, never. What I have looked for is what kind of person you are. Are you a hard worker? Are you reliable? Are you open to other viewpoints? Have you stepped outside of your own self-interest to serve others? Have you found a way to serve our country, whether in uniform or in your community? Again and again, I have seen that those are the qualities that I want on my team because those are the qualities that move our businesses and schools and our entire country forward. And, and, and just understand this, those are the qualities that you all already embody. They're the values you learned from your parents, from the communities you grew up in. And today, more than ever before, that's what the world needs.
Good evening. Welcome to our work session. Today is Monday, May ninth. Time is flying. And it's that graduation season. Thank you for our Division of Information Technology, they're becoming more like a production company. So thank you for always giving us a great opening. On our agenda first, and, and if you look, the agenda is really kind of, kind of light. So hopefully we will have great discussion. And go watch the playoffs. Next on the public agenda is, as our, on our agenda is our public agenda. We do have two citizens who are signed up. I'm calling in the order that you appear on this agenda. It's Ms. Teresa Alameen and Mr. Zeph Baker. And Ms. Alameen, I don't see her. She rescheduled for next week. Okay, so then it's Mr. Zeph Baker. And while you're coming to the podium, which everyone, if you will notice, our podium has finally been moved over to my left. Mr. Zeph Baker, if you would come to the podium and I'll read our disclaimer while you do that. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review any individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address such problems by emailing Ms. Karen Jones or calling the superintendent's office or Ms. Jones to request to be on the public agenda. Okay, now you're.
All right. Good evening, school board members and all those who are making this meeting happen. I'm Zeph Baker. I live at 1091 Bolton Court, Columbus, Georgia. Just really throw a rock and you'll be able to probably break one of my windows. But I'm here today in reference to the Zeph Baker Foundation. I appreciate the school district, Muskogee County School District in partnering with the Zeph Baker Foundation. Over the last year, we have recognized athletes, scholar athletes, and their performance on the field or on the court, basically in the fall athletics. And so, you know, we're a foundation, a nonprofit foundation committed to acknowledging, encouraging, and supporting individual and organizational civic engagement, engagement, selfless acts of kindness by extraordinary citizens, and intentional acts of community building. Last year, the foundation made a commitment to recognize and support our students. As part of our commitment, we recognize scholar athletes throughout Muskogee County to include, these are the students, Tyore Woods, Shaw Rifle Team, Alana Chaney, Jordan Girls Basketball, Ryan Mobley, Jr., Spencer High School, Hannah Wilkins at Hardaway Swim Team, Abby Tillery, Columbus Flag Football, John Williams, Kendrick Basketball, Henry Almeida, Hardaway Cheerleader, Bridget Jones, Columbus Football, Devon Rouse, Carver Football, my alma mater, Abby Lavelle, Northside Softball, Lakea Battle, Jordan Cross Country, Odarius Peak, Shaw Football, Victoria Rosser, Spencer Cross Country, Christian Curry, Hardaway Football, Haley Hurd, Columbus Cross Country, Jordan Owens, Kendrick Football, Heather Hudson, Jordan Football, Shamaya Mackin, Shaw Volleyball. And so also, we started our Heritage Bowl Scholarship. And this was to recognize an athlete from each one of the teams participating in the Carver Spencer Football Game in the Heritage Bowl. And so we also committed to giving a scholarship to each, to a child or athlete on Carver's team as well as Spencer's team. And we let the coaches and the committee do that. So we are honoring them next Thursday. We recognize our honorees. And this evening, I want to invite the superintendent, Dr. Lewis, and all the members of the school board to a recognition dinner to recognize the hard work and scholarship of recipients of the Zeph Baker Foundation. The Scholar Athlete of the Week during the fall sports. Partnering within Muskogee County School District, we identified eighteen scholar athletes for their spectacular performances, including rifle, swimming, cross country, cheerleading, softball, flag football, volleyball, and basketball. The dinner will be at seven PM next Tuesday, May seventeenth, excuse me, May, actually it's going to be Thursday, May nineteenth, at Sally Ann's Kitchen, right here in, at eight twenty Midtown Drive, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine zero six. Each one of you will receive an email. So I just wanted to give the, come and give the invitation. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I think we're going to be in.
Project search.
Graduation on Thursday, but thank you for the invitation and thank you for the partnership. And Ms. Alameen, you said it was going to reschedule. All right, Ms. Buckner.
Oh, I was doing the, what's the rationale for, for the moving of the podium? It was from. Oh. Okay. I still don't know the rationale. Okay. That was the discussion I wasn't part of. That's fine though, if you want to do it later.
Do you have a question? Okay. Next on the agenda, Ms. Buckner, it's, turn your mic back on, is the education committee?
We have one item on the education committee, and that's the summer learning experience. And that will be Mr. Cypher and Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Dr. Lewis, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're waiting for the PowerPoint slides to come up, but we're going to provide an update on where we are with summer learning experience as we rapidly approach in that start date. My name is Tim Smith, Executive Director of Federal Programs. And so we're going to jump in, I don't know if this will switch it in that mode. Okay. So we have, is there a way you can get that to full, full screen? Not me. All right, that's better. I could see. All right, so we have our site dates and times. Our pre-K program is starting May thirty first, and that's a seven-week program. That's through a state-funded grant specifically for rising kindergarten students who meet specific criteria. So that will start May thirty first and run through July thirteenth. The buses will start dropping students off at elementary schools at seven o'clock, so that's when doors will open. The elementary, or the pre-K program will start at seven thirty, end at two thirty, and that's when buses will start picking up the elementary kids. The K five, or K twelve program will start June sixth and run through June thirtieth. So that'll be a, a four-week program. We've extended out the, the times during the day, so it's a longer day. That's basically the same amount of time they had last summer, but it doesn't go into July. Elementary will start at eight o'clock and end at two o'clock. And then middle school will start at eight thirty, end at one thirty. And you see the doors opening and bus pickup times there for middle school. High school will start at eight thirty, end at two thirty. And there's not transportation for bus students, or for high school students, I'm sorry. These are the elementary hosts or sites for the summer. There are seventeen different elementary sites. If they're a shared site, you'll see that the, the host site is underlined. And the ones in green are the ones that have a pre-K, at least one pre-K class there. So there's only two sites at this point that does not have, or for this year that does not have a pre-K class there. I'll leave that there just for a minute. But for the most part, there was some shifting in the sites, so it's different schools hosting. There's a couple of situations where we kept them at the same site for a variety of reasons. Here's the middle school and high school sites. Each high school have their own site. The middle school sites, most of them have their own. There's a couple of shared sites there. And then Rothschild, due to construction at the school, will be a separate site, but it'll be at Ford. So Ford will have two different programs going on this summer. So as of today, we were just short of three thousand five hundred students registered in, in Infinite Campus as a result of online registrations and also as a result of schools registering students in Infinite Campus. So they can continue to register at the school. The schools can continue to enter the students in Infinite Campus through this Friday, and that will be the count that we're using to finalize staffing for the summer. Based on the, we, we asked for some projections last week, and based on those projections, we're anticipating about five thousand, little more than five thousand students this summer. So hopefully by the end of this week, we'll, we'll see those numbers. As far as the hiring go, is going, as of May second, we had nine hundred and twenty-nine employees that had applied for summer learning. That's, that, I have the breakdown there, but it's pre-K, that's teachers, parapros, summer transition coaches for the pre-K programs and so on. So, and then we've also added subs this year as well, just so that there was an organized list where site directors could pull from if, if and when teachers are out.
Forty-nine percent people are there too? Forty-nine percent teachers. Are they included? Are they eligible for hiring?
So forty-nine percent teachers can work. If they are retired teachers, we told the sites they needed a job share them because if they taught one class by themselves for the whole week, they would exceed the number of hours they can work under TRS. If they're not retirees, then there was no restriction on the number of hours. So forty-nine percent teachers were able to apply.
Okay, they were able to apply, but there's some problem with the number of hours that they may incur. They, that includes the summertime too?
Yes, year round.
Oh, okay.
There's a, there's a monthly cap on, on the hours they can work per TRS guidelines.
Okay.
And it's not really our, it's not as much of a problem for us, it's more for them and their retirement benefits.
Yeah. Somebody asked me that, that's why I was wondering. Thank you.
All right, now my contact's going blurry. So, let's see, for the pay, we're, this summer, we're still doing a time and a half of the normal pay rate. For the substitute, if there's a substitute teacher, like a current substitute teacher, teacher this summer, they will get paid a time and a half of their daily rate. So, same, same approach we did last summer. The hiring preferences for all positions are right there. So, basically, if you've got a site that has, let's take Bert David, where they have Bert David Blanchard and Eagle Ridge there. First preference is going to go to teachers from the site, the host site. Second, to employees from the shared schools. And then, third, to teachers from other sites or employees from other sites. That being said, we also told the site directors to be sure that you're not just hiring all from one school. You need to have teachers there from each site, so, because you have kids from each site. The class size limits are fifteen to eighteen. We set it up this year to where they could hire para pros if they had a hard time getting enough teachers to cover the student numbers. We, the, it has not been as much of an issue as we thought it was going to be in, in getting people to want to work this summer. So, that's been a pleasant surprise. Para pros can be hired to increase class sizes to nineteen to twenty-four. So, it just gives them some flexibility in how they staff their sites. And then, for subs to work, had a requirement that they had to have subbed at least twenty-one days this year. And that was a request from HR, but the purpose there is we didn't want someone who didn't sub hardly at all this year and all of a sudden come on a pay, you know, come do it for a time and a half. So, that was the reason for that requirement. The staff recommendations, the site directors have been making recommendations in Talon Ed, which is our platform for hiring. Once the recommendation went in, HR sent out a notification to that employee just to let them know a recommendation has been made on your behalf to work at this site under this site director, under, for this position. There will be another communication going out. At this point, we'll move it to next week now that we're getting closer to knowing the numbers. But that next communication will go out to the ones who are finalized to be working at that site, and then they will have the opportunity to accept or reject the position. So, then that will still give us some time to go ahead and find a replacement. So, to HR, we appreciate their efforts there because that will streamline some of the headaches we had last summer with that. The pre-K program is what they're calling a Rising Kindergarten Program. It is a twenty-nine-day program. There's a teacher and para in each class with a max size, max class size of twelve students. So, it's a great adult student ratio. There's a six-and-a-half-hour instruction requirements, per-day requirement in the grants. Every two classes has a transition coach. And so, that coach will do a variety of things from assisting the teachers in the classroom to communicating with parents, doing parent workshops, helping recruit students, getting them enrolled. They have a variety of tasks there. And then, for students to be eligible for this program, they have to have met one of these three criteria. Either they did not attend a Georgia pre-K or Head Start program this year, or they did, but they didn't attend all year. And the third one is they attended Georgia pre-K or Head Start program for a whole year, but they need additional support. So, it could be academic struggles, social struggles, and so on, just to get them ready for that kindergarten jump. The SLE K eight program, we are using the same curriculum resources we used last summer that we purchased through Scholastic. Lit Camp is the ELA one, and that includes a social-emotional piece. And these are the seven key strengths that is built into that curriculum around the social-emotional subject and content. Math is Bell Xcel, and that's the same one we used last year. We are, we've ordered those materials. The Lit Camp materials, we didn't have to order those this year. We had them on hand from last year, but the Bell Xcel was consumable, so we had to replenish. We'll provide virtual training for new teachers to SLE this summer on June second and/or June third. They can pick one of each of the times there for Lit Camp and Bell Xcel. This would apply to new K eight teachers for SLE. Anyone can attend it, but we're requiring, if you didn't teach last summer, you have to attend it this, this summer. For high school, the possible focuses there are around credit recovery, SAT, ACT prep, AP, IB bootcamps, and then enrichment activities will be handled in-house. And that's something we added this year. Last year, we just had like the Fine Arts, the PEs, teachers, we had those at K eights. We've added those at high school this summer. Here's a list of the community partners that we are partnered with. Some, a number of them are doing things voluntarily with the schools. And then some, there are some charges for, and those are being assigned out to the schools as far as a schedule that the site directors will receive to schedule with. As far as transportation, it's provided for pre-K through eighth-grade students to the zone school. So, magnet students, ESWEL students, hardships, open seat transfers, they're welcome to attend SLE. But if they need a bus, they would just go to the school that they are zoned for. And then, high school, we're not providing transportation. That would include Randy McCullers, they're considered a high school for this purpose. Meals, breakfast, and lunch will be provided for all students through SLE, all students who need it or want it. Any questions?
Are there any questions, Mrs. Chambers?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I absolutely love this program. But can you talk a little bit about the class size? Are we applying waivers to the summer?
So, the class size restrictions don't apply this summer because this is not required seat time for students, so we can really create whatever max sizes we want. We wanted to have smaller classes, but not too small where it was harder to justify paying what we're paying for someone to work it.
Okay, that makes sense, since it's optional for the students, so we don't have to abide by that.
We did say we're limiting it to fifteen to eighteen, is, okay.
Well, my concern was, I know that pre-K is eleven to one, and so, the max, the minimum here is twelve. So, I was just trying to make sure that we are within the state guidelines even during the summer. But if it doesn't apply, then that makes sense.
So, for the pre-K grant, that, there are requirements there because it is grant money. So, we, it is two adults in there, and so, it's the one-to-six ratio. And then, they have to have the two adults in there at all times other than during the rest time.
Perfect, perfect. I love the program, absolutely. But how are we tracking the progress of the students? This will be our second year using this program. It's very much hands-on, discovery-based. But how are we tracking to make sure we're actually sort of filling in those gaps? Because I know it's from the learning loss funding, so...
So, last year, we used Star Reading and Mass Screener. We had a, we used the spring scores for a pre, and then we did another assessment at the end as a post. Mr. Cypher, I don't know if you want to go...
Mr. Knopf.
Because Mr. Knopf.
Yes.
Here, tag me in. Patrick Knopf, Director of Research and Analysis Assessment. We used, because the theory of action was to reduce the overall slide, that's the basis for which we, we measured from. So, we did do some pre-post for STAR. We tracked those students and compared them to the other cohort of students that didn't participate. The plan for this year is to do the same. And we also have some other things that we're looking at, like perhaps like styles for students that that's appropriate for later. But again, the theory of action being that we're going to prevent summer slides. So, and we saw that when we shared the data with the board, that it did, in fact, help reduce the amount of learning lost from being inactive through the summer. So, it's enrichment and also reducing summer slide, which it, which it did do.
Perfect, perfect. And my last question, well, actually, I have two more. You mentioned that they were going to be focusing on social-emotional needs of the students. So, I was wondering, are we going to have counselors on staff as well?
So, each site has a counselor assigned or a position assigned, so they were able to make recommendations. And that's, they're only at that one site.
You mentioned also that there was a, for the high school students, that possibly they would focus on ACT and SAT. Who makes that decision? And how is it going to be determined?
Every school is offering that, as well as the AP and IB bootcamps. AP for the schools that offer advanced placement, and IB obviously for Hardaway. But these are helping kids get a jumpstart on the AP requirements for the school year.
So, every high school will have an opportunity to participate in it?
That's correct. I've actually met with the AP coordinators and have sent out a document to document what they are doing for AP or IB bootcamp, as well as their SAT and ACT prep.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. Thank you so much.
You mentioned that Fine Arts was being added. I don't know, I can't remember now if it was middle school and high school. Can you give me a little more information on that? Because I thought most of that was credit recovery.
So, just for high school, we added this year. That was just because last year, there were requests from the high schools for some enrichment pieces to be added, and we really didn't have the enrichment pieces there that we were focused on with the K eight. So, we allowed them to hire two slots for, where there's PE, visual arts, just to provide some other things during the day. Because not all of it is going to be focused around credit recovery. Some of it is going to be around engagement and just, just having some learning activities that don't necessarily tie to credits. Just like going to camp and doing some fun things while you're learning.
Follow up on that just a little bit. This is sort of part of, this is a component to enhancing the summer school program to make it more, you know, more attractive to the students. It was part of last, what, it's an enhancement on what we did last year that was incredibly successful.
Correct.
Would that be accurate? Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions? Okay, I have a couple. The only requirement for substitute teachers is that a substitute teacher would have substituted for twenty-one days?
For a, for a substitute, for an employee who is a substitute teacher during the year, for them to work in the summer learning program, they would have had to have subbed for at least twenty-one days, yes. And they can work as a, they could have been recommended to teach all four weeks, or they could just be on the list as a sub for SLE.
Okay, twenty-one days, we're talking three weeks. Okay. In the summer, in this program, do you have to make lesson, are there any lesson plans or are they given to you?
Lit Camp and Bell Xcel are structured curriculum, so there's very little planning or prep work for them. And even some of the prep work they did last year, we're trying to alleviate some of that. They did some copying of some materials. We're pre-printing those things this year to alleviate that even more for them.
So, what are the qualifications for our substitute teachers? What I'm saying, what I'm, a lot of our substitute teachers are actually teachers. Most, you know, most of them probably are actual teachers. But I looked down and I saw twenty-one days in a whole year. And I was trying to figure out the planning and the teaching or what's involved in that. And if twenty-one days of substitute teacher, depending on the qualification of a person who has just twenty-one days, I'm thinking in terms of how that classroom would look, particularly if there's any planning involved, because...
Right. So, my comment would be...
Are these people interviewed or, what's the hiring process on these twenty-one day, on the...
So, employees applied and through the online and on the internal openings side of things. They applied for whatever position they wanted to apply for. They were put in there generally, so like I could go in and apply for a teacher, elementary, teacher of middle school, and so on.
Just a regular...
So, they just put them in, and then the site directors, for the most part, people they're hiring are people they're familiar with from one of the sites they're connected with. So, they've been in contact, having those communications, and then they get someone that says, yes, I'd like to teach, you know, third grade at this site, then they would, the site director would go into Talon Ed and make that recommendation for that person to, to work that site.
Is there any preference given to teachers?
Yes. So, back to your question about subs working that. That, if a sub is working all four weeks, that's going to be a situation where that site director had a hard time filling positions with full-time teachers. So, I don't even know if we had that situation this summer because we've had good interests. I'm just saying it's a possibility that it could be, you know, that could happen. It happened last summer because we needed the people last summer. We had huge numbers and the way we, the timeline we were working under last year, we had to take whoever we could get, basically. This summer, we've been planning ahead longer, and so we had some better processes in place. So, I really think if there's any subs working all four weeks, that's going to be a very minimal thing. They would primarily subbing as subs.
Okay, very good. Okay, and for the, we have five thousand students. We're anticipating five thousand students this year. How many did we have last year?
Almost six thousand.
Okay, so we've got a slight decrease, okay. And one other, I want to go back to Mrs. Chambers' question because I couldn't, I didn't understand the answer to it about... Oh, I couldn't quite understand the answer to Dr., I mean, to Mrs. Chambers' question about how we were measuring progress now. I understood it. On last year, y'all said you're using the, you're using the math and the, and star reading and math. Okay, so, how was that reported to us?
So, with this...
How was, yeah, how was the actual progress of the summer reading program reported?
So, we have that star reading and math that they take in the spring, so we'll use that as a, as a pre-test score. And then, in the last week of SLE, the students will take it again, and we'll have that, that, that post-test. And then, those...
Okay, do we have those results? Because I think, as I heard Mr. Knopf, it sounds like it was merging into something else, into a...
So...
So, I just want the progress of just the summer reading program. I guess that's the only way it could be reported, in an objective way. The progress of just the summer reading program. How do we, how do we measure that? So, we use two tests. We use star math and star reading. We did a pre-test, and then we did a post-test.
Yes.
I'm asking, what were the results of tho, of those tests? And I want to see if we saw, I want to know the results of it first.
Okay, and I can send those to you. We shared those in the presentation that we did before. Yeah, when we, back in September, when we gave the, the overall after-action. But I can send, I can share those with, I can send those with you. But again, it was in terms of...
Did you measure, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a comparison, as Dr. Smith said, it's a comparison of their spring, which is the last one for the year that we treated as their pre. They were given another in the summer as a post, and we actually followed them again in the fall just to see what it looked like for that group in the fall. So, once we did those comparisons across the three, we could see where students who didn't participate in the program saw a greater decrease over time to the fall than the students that participated in the program comparatively.
That's all we did. We, we did the students that did not participate.
Yes, we compared both cohorts.
But we also did the ones that participated and measured that, too.
Yes, yes, that was, it was a comparison of the two cohorts, basically a pre, post, post. But we, what we did is we, we took those out and then we, and we saw, and we showed where there was a much greater negative decline between spring to fall for the group that didn't participate as compared to the group that did. And that was also for math, so we did the same analysis for both.
And the ones that participated, we showed that, too.
We showed that they had less learning loss than, in terms, for those metrics, in terms of those metrics than compared to the other students.
And did we show, that we used the, the scores of the individual students? And did we show that we used the scores of the individual students?
Yes. Yeah, that, we, we start from the very bottom and go up, yes.
Those students to see, like, if we had ten students, we used the ten students from the pre-test of ten, and then the post-test of the ten, from the beginning of the summer to the end of the summer.
Yes.
And those students.
Those the only ones we used, yeah.
And those students, students not compared to anybody. Just those students that we get a result from those, those students show.
If I, I think I understand what you're asking, yes. We had some morbidity, we had some students we took out because they didn't have all three scores. We used the comparison for all three scores, and we still were in the several thousands of students and cases to do that with. We had some students that didn't have both, they may have joined us late or left us early in the fall. But yes, we had all three scores that we used for the comparison.
Thanks. Okay, are there any more questions? Okay, Mrs. Green, that concludes our, our report.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Booker. Ms. Tillery, Policy Committee.
My own, okay. It's four point zero one, the Board Policy DJEE, Local Purchasing. Prudent, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say prudent administration of the school system demands continual review and updating of board policies. In accordance with existing needs of the school district, Ms. McCray is asking for a review of the Board Policy DJEE, the purchasing with possible revisions. And it hasn't been updated since 2017, I don't believe, so.
Yes, but our, I'm sorry, our revision is probably gonna take a little longer, I think, to get more input from all board members, and it's gonna require a little more legal counsel involvement. So we will probably see this one again next month to actually take action on it. Or no, to then actually have it set, to discuss it. So I will spend this month gathering all that input and some more guidance from legal counsel. Well, I had hoped to have more of a revision in place, but then I just haven't gotten to it yet, so.
Hit your, hit your button.
Wait, you're not on yet.
Okay, so I, so you were hoping to make some suggestions to what we have, or what we're gonna have? So it was gonna come to the meeting with your suggestions of what to, of only your suggestions?
Right, I'd like to have a little more time to get input from all the board members that want to weigh in on it and kind of.
Okay.
And obviously, legal counsel too, to have an actual draft that we can then present for a month. At this point, it's still been more just kind of discussion, nothing put into a draft yet. Which is my fault, I just haven't.
Okay, so it's, it's gonna be a basic board thing, okay. Because it was sounding like it was just one thing, one person.
That job I have, you know, gets away every now.
All right. Just one quick comment, board members, if I can. Can I make a request that we have our legal counsel pull the federal and the state law as it relates to set-asides and local contracting? So that we can make an informed decision and make sure that we're in line. Because we've talked about this several times.
You're right, but it has to go through legal counsel before we even.
I just want to make sure we're not sort of, you know, getting into waters that may cause issues later on. And I know, Mark, you've brought this up several times, and I do agree that we should.
Look at it.
Somehow be able to, if there's a legal way to do it, to look at, how do we look at local businesses or small businesses and say, this is a set-aside? And you may be able to do that if we upfront say it's a set-aside. So if they could just weigh in on that, that would be great.
The law firm is waiting on board suggestions, so they can guide us.
There any other questions? If not, we'll probably revisit next month.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tillery. Next, we have Dr. Sly.
Chairman, at this time every year, the Discipline Committee presents the Updated Student Handbook. This is an important handbook that we use pretty much the same thing every year, but we do make changes every year. Policy requires that it sit on the table for thirty days, so that it can be evaluated by board members and other people. And that time has expired, now we are gonna vote on it to activate it, the new, the new student handbook.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sly. Next is the Personnel Committee.
I just have a question about some of the names in there.
They, some of the names have already even changed, will that be updated before it's printed? Okay, okay, just making sure.
All right, next is our Personnel Committee. Six point zero one, superintendent is recommending Ms. Darielle Morris as the Assistant Principal at Baker Middle School. There are some attachments on each of these. I will read the recommendation and the schools, and the divisions or school on all of these, and if you have a question, go ahead and let me know. Six point zero two is Assistant Principal at J.D. Davis, superintendent is recommending Ms. Ebony Robinson. On six point zero three, superintendent is recommending Dr. Sonia Moore for the Assistant Principal at Dorothy Height Elementary School. Six point zero four, superintendent is recommending Ms. Erin Sizemore as the Assistant Principal at Eagle Ridge Academy. Item six point zero five, the superintendent is recommending Mr. Sean Fisher for Shaw High School. Will they have three? They will have three? All right, six point zero six, superintendent is recommending Mr. Garrett Church as the Assistant Principal for William Henry Spencer High School. Six point zero seven, the superintendent is recommending Director of Accounting, Ms. Brandy Hoskins. And six point zero eight, superintendent is recommending Ms. Christine Hall for the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. And then our, our monthly reports, personnel reports are attached. If you have any questions about any of these. Hearing, we're hearing now. Ms. Booker has her mic on.
No, I don't have any question about any of the recommendations. I just have a question about, for information. Okay, what, what is an, let's see, it's an education leadership certificate.
Which one are you on?
Oh, I didn't necessarily see, it was just something, they always usually have education leadership degree.
So.
And this one.
What's the certificate, what's the difference? I got you.
Yeah, what's the difference, education, yeah, because they usually have education, leadership.
It depends on whether or not they've actually earned a degree in that, in that leadership, or they can add, do an add-on certificate.
Okay.
That's, that's the same thing, gives them the same status, same accreditation, same ability. But it's just an add-on, they may have, perhaps they have a specialist degree already in something else, and they've gone back and gotten educational leadership.
Like you can add up on, okay, I got you. All right, that, I just want, and then, the other question is, like I said, this, these are just little technical things. We, for our director, we have Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. I've just, do we, was that always called the Executive Director instead of Director?
That's the same title that the previous Executive Director, Ms. Watt, had.
All right, then, I just wanted to know, I thought we just used Director instead of, if that was something different, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, hearing no other questions. The next committee report will come from Ms. Williams, Finance Committee. Fisher. Oh, I'm ready, I'm ready to go. I'm at the, I'm at the, I'm at the end of the agenda, I need y'all to catch the drift here. Mr. Cantrell will do the Construction Committee next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, moving on to seven point oh one, the Construction Status Report. That's what I was looking at a second ago. Is Ward, you gonna make a presentation? Ward Odom? Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Travis Anderson, Chief Operations Officer, and we are excited to present to you our Construction Update Report for the month of May. Remember, we do this every other month, so every odd month, you'll get a slideshow with all of our exciting updates, what's happening in the field. Maybe we won't. Thank you. All righty, so, we've made some progress at the weight room expansion at Carver. Columbus High School, you see lots of progress happening there with the weight room expansion. Lots of projects happening at Jordan High School, as you know, we are doing lots of renovations there. What you see here is the ADA ramp that's being installed. This is the awning for the new elevator. This is the inside of the media center. Last time you saw this, it was a completely empty room, now you see that we're starting to put studs up. As you know, we are renovating our middle school athletic fields, this is Baker. Nothing really exciting to see there, lots of dirt being moved, but that will be happening at our middle school fields. Veterans Bandroom Expansion is well on its way. And of course, our big one, the stadium. So if you haven't been out there recently, it is really starting to look like a stadium, so we are excited. Yes. We are on schedule to tour again the twenty-third. We are, we are on track to be completed by September. These are tennis courts. Lots of parking, we are ready to host games real soon. We even have grass to maintain already. Of course, we have some additional projects that we're working on. Matthews Elementary School addition with estimated completion of this winter. We have additional middle school fields that you did not see, but again, it's just dirt being moved at this point, so nothing really exciting. But still happening at Richards and Rothschild, and Northside's weight room is also being expanded. We are very thankful for our partnership with our vendors, who allow us to continue to stay within budget through value engineering and making sure that we are always being as creative and responsible as possible of taxpayers' dollars. And we thank our taxpayers and our community for their support as we continue to build and improve upon the assets that our district. One really big project, you can go to the next slide. One really big project that we want to talk to you about is our new elementary school. We're really excited about that.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
I know that one of the SPOLOST items, and it might have been early on, and it might have dropped off, but I couldn't remember when I was talking to a constituent the other day, was building some basic shelters at our schools for the bus areas. We had some schools that don't have, you know, a covered area for bus loading. Is that still something being considered? For example, Midland Middle, I don't think has a bus shelter for those kids in that area.
The sidewalk awning.
Yeah, they're out there open, yeah, but we had that in the SPOLOST at one time.
Yeah, that, that was in the SPOLOST, is that correct? Because I thought all the, I thought all of those projects were done.
So that one must have dropped off then.
So that is not currently in our project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson. I noticed on one of the projects here, the contingency dropped from three hundred seventeen to eighty-four thousand. How much is a contingency per project? What, what do they, how do they come up with that figure on each project anyway?
So that's an excellent question. That is, that standard is actually changing in our environment because of inflation. And so we have typical standards that we follow depending upon the type of project. But as we are following the guidance of our consultants and our contractors and architects, it fluctuates depending upon the type of project, the type of materials that are needed, and the risk associated with that project. So there really isn't a standard anymore, because there's so many changes happening in our world and our global economy. But we range between three and fifteen percent for contingency.
Okay, another question, I went by Jordan High yesterday, and at their ball field, I went there last year, and the bleachers by the ball field were, basically, they were nice, they were man-made, but they were not to scale as far as, like, walking up steps. And I heard that they was gonna replace those bleachers with new bleachers, and I don't see that on the project. I almost fell off of it, and while I was there, another lady did fall from the bleachers right there. Or this, you know, where you said at, and, and I was just wondering, that was almost a hazard. And I know that personally, just by me trying to get up on the first level.
Thank you for that question, I'm gonna yield to Ward Odom for that.
Absolutely, good evening, so over, I'm assuming you're talking about the bleachers over around the baseball field? Yes, sir. Absolutely, we have those in the athletic budget to replace, and they'll be replaced in the near future.
They're gonna be placed in the summertime here?
In summertime, within their future.
Thank you, Ward, appreciate it. Another question, Ms. Chambers?
Just with that said, and if you've done this already, I apologize, but can we get an updated copy of that five-year facilities plan? I know it's a work in progress and it's constantly changing, but if we get an updated copy, if you can.
Hold that thought till next month, you get a chance to see the revised one that you had to approve anyway. All righty, let's talk about the new elementary school. So last month, if you recall, we presented to you about some of the strategic planning that we do when building any project. We talked about the difference between value engineering, scope production, and project redesign. Remember, we had to make meal for our, for our family. We decided last month, based upon all that we knew, the best thing to do for the new elementary school was to go with a project redesign, in the hopes that we would be able to reduce the size of the building to align with Dorothy Height Elementary, as well as to reduce the cost, because we were over budget. That was last month. Things are changing very rapidly in our global economy. We are very cautious to pay attention to what's happening in the world, and so things have changed. Three major things have changed since we presented last month. Then inflation is outpacing the projected savings of the redesign. So even if we were to completely redesign that building, what we anticipate saving by redesigning the building is out, is being outpaced by the inflation rate currently. The lockdowns in China for COVID-19 have a significant impact on our economy globally, and they have lasted longer than we anticipated. As well as the conflict in Europe, and that has a significant impact. Those things impact how we are able to receive and transport goods, and it impacts construction significantly. These are things that we did not know would be severe as they were just one month ago. So as of today, we have a new recommendation. We are recommending that we move forward with a value engineered design for the elementary school. You'll see a new approximate revised timeline. We are hopeful, and you'll see in your board packet, we are hopeful that we will review the budget, the new budget, as well as the vendor approval this month. And then we'll move forward with breaking ground in summer 2022, with a completion date in spring 2024. This is important, because things are changing rapidly. And we know that in order to get the building built, and to not have to deal with significant inflation, significant changes in the global economy, that we need to move now. About a week ago, the superintendent received a bulletin, I was reading the article, Ward heard something from our contractors, that things are changing, and if you have a shovel-ready project, you should move forward with it right away, in order to make sure that it happens. So our recommendation has changed, and as of this month, we are recommending that we move forward with a value engineered design. As a reminder, the original budget was twenty-five million. The revised budget, you see there, is a little over thirty-seven million dollars. Our lowest bidder is Freeman and Associates. You're probably asking, Travis, where is this money coming from? And that's an excellent question. We are in a unique opportunity at this moment to, to leverage some ESSER funds in order to make up the difference in our budget. So what we are going to do is we are going to use ESSER funds to pay for projects that were slated for ESPOLOSH dollars. And then take those savings for those projects and transfer them to the new elementary school. That means that we would still be able to identify all of the needs that we needed in ESPOLOSH, and still have those projects move forward, we're not taking any of those projects away. As well as build the new elementary school with the increased budget. And we're in this unique position because of the ESSER funding that we have at this moment, which is another reason why we need to move and act now, because ESSER funding does have a time limit on it. So it's really important that we take advantage of that funding source in order to make up the difference and to cover the costs, in order to move forward with the new elementary school.
And primarily, the ESSER funds that we're talking about were those that were dedicated. Originally in ESPOLOST, we're looking at some HVAC, which pertains to ventilation, all those things that get, makes that an allowable expenditure under ESSER, so we can just leverage those dollars for this purpose.
I, I could not agree with this decision more. I mean, I, I have been holding my breath to get this project started, because if you wait, it's like waiting to have a baby until everything's right, you're never gonna start it. You're never gonna have that baby. You know, we need to get this going, and we need it for our students, we need it because we promised it to the voters, and that district needs it, so, and, and I agree with you. If we keep holding off, we're just gonna keep piling on as inflation. My only concern, and, and I know David. My only concern, and, and I know David just walked in, so great entrance, good timing, is how we're going to mitigate the supply and demand issues of not being able to get certain materials like windows and glass and that sort of stuff. Are we able to preorder any of that? Are we able to, you know, do something? Okay, because that's my biggest concern is, you know, you can start the, you can start the project as you should. You know, I agree, but the, but we have to also allow for a setting of expectations that there are things out of our control, especially when it comes to delivery of materials in this industry that may slow it down. Would that be an accurate way to put it? Okay, alright, thank you.
And if we act this month, we can go ahead and sign contracts and get things locked in June 1. That'll help us with the setting and placing of those orders. And if you'll notice, we give ourselves a little more lead time as far as, the school is not scheduled to open till August of 2024. If we start this summer, that gives us plenty, we think, plenty of lead time to get things ordered and constructed and time to open up in August of 24. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that the public, you know, knows that we have had discussions in terms of how we're going to get the school built in the most efficient manner, in the most cost-saving manner. But never has there been any discussion about not building the school. We, this project is a project that we promised, and it's a project that we will complete. I want to make sure that the public knows that there has never been any discussion on not building the school. Yes, just delay.
And also, another point of clarity is we use the word redesign so much. It's important to say that the original design as presented is what we're moving forward with. None, none of, none of the design has been changed. It was just an exploration, and what we discovered is we're going to keep what we got and move forward.
Just slightly, slightly different. The value engineered design is what we're moving forward with. So it's a little different than the original design. Remember, we talked about how you, you look at what your original design is, and when you get your budget, your bids back, and then you work with the architects and the contractor to value engineer. Ultimately, it will be a very similar school to what was the original design, but slightly different.
Right.
But we go through that.
That is a natural process that we go through.
Every single
Yes.
project that we do because that's what the taxpayers expect us to do.
Absolutely.
So the point is, it's, it's just like we presented it with your va- value engineering as we always do. Your original design.
Better, exactly. It's better. Any other questions? Alrighty, well, thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to more questions. Moving on to 7.02, revised budget replacement.
That's what he just did, right?
I don't know. Okay. 704, Arnold Modernization Project. Approve SP Architects, Sadar Patel as the architect for the Arnold Middle School Modernization Project. Any questions on this, ladies and gentlemen?
One quick, 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 quick question. Do we have an estimated start date on that one?
Yes, the estimated start date on that would be summer of 23.
Thank you, Sarah. And 7.05, Arnold Project Delivery Method. Approve the Project Delivery Method of Construction Manager at Risk for Arnold Modernization Project. Any questions? If not, Madam Chair, that's all for the Construction Committee, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Ms. Chambers will present the Property Committee.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Property Committee, 8.01 is the museum report. Since our last report, we have reached 3,154 people through in-person programming. Next month, we will look forward to our last Museum Pa- Pals visit for the year. And one exhibit opened during the month is called Do You Follow? Artists Working in Series and Suites in the Woodruff Works on Paper Gallery. We closed the exhibit Black is Beautiful, Recently Gifts from Black Art in America, and Najee and Satara Dorsey during the month, concluded with a roundtable discussion and a reception. There are some other things going on at the museum as well. There is a calendar attached. Any questions from board members about the activities going on at the bo- at the museum? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the library report. That's 8.02. As a part of the library's celebration of Juneteenth Week, in partnership with the City of Columbus, we will host a Clothes Story. That's the name of the exhibit, and it will be there from June the 11th to June the 25th. This particular exhibit will acknowledge and celebrate black women through their impactful stories and their clothing, while highlighting clothes from the era of 1890s to 1960s. So you don't want to miss that. In addition, during this period, all Muskogee libraries will offer other programmings, reading lists, and possibly an art exhibit or two as well. If you would like more information, please go to our website, cvlg.org, or you can visit the city's website, columbusga.org/juneteenth. Any questions? There are some great service stories attached, board members, for your reading pleasure. Are there any questions about the library report? Ms. Buckner? Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to 8.03. 8.03 is the sale of the 30th Avenue Elementary School, the former. And this is, the superintendent is recommending that we approve this sale at 250,000. This has been discussed previously, board members, if you remember. Does anyone have any questions about this sale? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to 8.04, and we've discussed this one as well. This is the sale of the Rose Hill Center. And the superintendent is recommending that we approve the sale at a price of 375,000. Any questions, board members? Last item for the Property Committee is 8.05. This is a recommendation that we approve and declare surplus property for radios and DVRs. And these items are coming from the Transportation Department. Are these operable? Are they still in use? Are we replacing the system? There's quite a few on here being surplus.
They're no longer compatible with our system.
They're not, okay. So they don't talk to each other?
No, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Hearing none, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you that completes the Property Committee.
Does it say in there? Oh, how, how do we sell them? Because there's a whole bunch of it. I was just trying to see.
We auction them with our surplus items, just like we would auction off a bus or things like that. So there are other districts that might be able to utilize them, other companies that might utilize those.
Oh, okay, and then you maybe have to sell them like in a, in a group?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, this is a bunch of it.
It is a lot of it.
Okay, wait a minute, y'all, I'm trying.
Are they totally outdated radio systems, or are they, they're usable with other companies? Smaller companies are divided up?
They're not outdated. They're outdated for us, but there are some companies that might still be able to utilize them. Keep in mind, we don't necessarily have the latest and greatest technology. So once it's outdated for us, it's likely outdated for other companies as well. But there are still districts and companies that are able to use them and maybe use them for parts.
I just noticed all of them are rated poor. We didn't have a good radio in the bunch, it don't look like.
We are not anticipating a lot of money from these sales.
Well, I just think some smaller companies, not just so much another school district of, you know, trucking companies or, you know, delivery companies where they could use it on a smaller system right there, where they could divide them up compared to just, you know, a massive system like we have here. And that's why I was wondering if they, if they are usable, where, you know, the local folks might want to, to try and bid on these right here if they have a, a company that's got several delivery trucks and, but not wanting to spend major money on updating this stuff where they was worthy enough for a local company to use.
Absolutely.
But we're, we're accepting all bids.
Absolutely, anyone can bid on it.
But I'm just letting it out so, spreading it out where the people listening to know that this is available out here because, you know, I've got radio systems in all my trucks, and they're expensive to go out and buy brand new ones. And if you've got to update all new, but if you can get your hands on some good, a good used system that, that the school system, I would think we would have kept them up to date to a large degree, or they wouldn't even have been usable. And, you know, maybe they could listen to us and say, let me check into these radios right here. Where we might have a chance to, to buy 10 of them for our trucks, for our fleet of trucks unless, are they all being sold at once, or are they able to be separated where they're? Because it looks like about 200 or 300 of them in here by, just looking at the numbers.
They'll be broken into spot lots.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I just have one question. Ms. Williams, did you have a question about the radios?
No, it's just to-
Okay, I do have a question about the radio. I, of course, I know what the radios are, but the DVR, is this a camera system that was in the buses? I just want to make sure for clarity.
Our buses are equipped with cameras, and so the DVR is assist, the old system that would store those video footages.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cantrell. And last committee report is Finance Committee, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, for next week's consideration, you have before you 9.01. Superintendent will ask for your approval of those individuals employed by the Muskogee County School District on March 16th, 2022, to receive a $2,000 salary supplement to be paid on May 31st for monthly paid employees and May 20th for the bi-weekly paid employees, using approximately $7 million of funding provided by the state, supplemented by approximately $22,500,000 from ESSER funding to cover the remaining employees and benefits. I hope this will show as another commitment to the outstanding, outstanding staff, teachers, everybody in the district that we appreciate so much for all that they've done.
And if I may, just to provide some background, if I may. Most everyone probably recognizes we've had in Georgia, we've been very fortunate with our revenues at the state level. And Governor Kemp has made that available to us by way of the supplement. And it is a supplement for our employees. And I do want to just read in the record that on April 29th, 2022, the district received the additional funding included in the amended fiscal year 2022 budget, otherwise known as HB 9110, for the state of Georgia, which Governor Kemp signed on March 16th, 2022 to cover a $2,000 salary supplement to specified categories of full-time and part-time employees. And those are specified specifically by the governor and the state. The state funded the following positions: teachers, counselors, superintendent, assistant superintendents, principals, assistant principals, school health care, special education, specialist media, technology, psychologists, pair professionals, custodians, bus drivers, school nutrition employees, G-Nets-funded employees, and pre-K disability-funded employees. And as you all know, the state rarely sends enough money to cover all of our employees because we choose to do things that fund light music, art, PE, those kind of things that the state typically only funds one of. So in addition to the positions listed above, the district has approximately 1,000 more employees who would also receive the supplement based on those categories that were read previously. I am recommending that individuals employed by the district, and as you previously read on March 16th, and this is specified again by, outlined by the state as to those target dates. So on March 16th, receive a $2,000 salary supplement to be paid on May 31st for monthly paid employees and May 20th for bi-weekly paid employees, using approximately $7 million of funding provided by the state amended budget, with then the additional 2.5 coming from the ESSER funds as previously read. An individual employed by the district for the purposes of the supplement is defined as an employee with a hire date prior to March 17th, 2022, and a termination date after March 16th with an active pay assignment covering March 16th. Exceptions to this would be, would include board members, community coaches, substitute teachers and pairs who worked less than 90 days in FY 2022, museum employees, Chattahoochee Valley Library employees, certain part-time employees who are not actively working, contracted employees. Pre-K teachers and pairs would not get the May payment as they have already received two $1,000 supplements, which were paid in February and April, funded by the Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning. Eligible substitutes, teachers, pairs, bus drivers will receive this supplement with the June payroll.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Ms. Buckner?
49% teachers, will they receive anything?
Yes.
What will they receive?
I'm sorry?
I asked first if they-
In June, yeah. No, in May, that's in May as well.
Okay, and what, they, they receive the, the whole 2,000? Oh.
Based on-
Oh, okay.
Given to us, outlined by the state.
Okay, I was just wondering, very good. See, I always, they were fussing about the, excuse me, prior to-
Don't fuss at us, we're giving money.
They have. No, prior to that, they were always approaching-
We're giving money because they deserve it.
They were approaching me about why did we only receive-
And the state told us to.
One half.
And, and it's important to recognize that the money coming from the state is governed by the, is outlined by the state. Those that are being paid through additional funds at the ESSER level, that too is governed by ESSER.
Is allowed by, is allowed by ESSER, governed by this board and the superintendent's recommendation that we do this. I don't know the answer to this, but I'm curious if you know of any other districts doing this for everybody, so.
Oh, I, I would, yes, I do know.
Well. All of these various categories.
I think most districts that I'm aware of are doing just what we're doing based on the prescribed and outlined guidelines from the state and/or respective ESSER funds.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, board members, that takes us to Purchase Exception A and B. These are items for board, under Board Policy DJED bids and quotations. You have, I think there's four items there, three items, for books and mathematics subscri- subscriptions, and study, weekly studies. So any questions on that? Seeing none, 9.03, Purchase Exception E for additional purchases. You have one item which, which encompasses three different items within it. I ask for further clarification on that because it wasn't real clear to me. This is, these are items to be purchased for school and teacher-selected instructional support materials. This is an example of these items, is classroom books, math manipulatives, headphones, science resources, anchor charts, et cetera. Any, any questions? Yes, Ms. Chambers?
So I know these things are instructional materials, but do we already have a list? And the reason why I'm asking is because it specifically says Lake Shore Learning Materials. And I know Lake Shore is a brand name, so that's a particular company that we're saying we're using for those learning materials. So that's why I'm asking the question.
So, sorry, Tim Smith, Executive Director of Federal Programs. This is the time of year when Title I schools are spending carryover money. And because, because of the time of the year, they're not really putting it towards positions. They're buying things that, that classrooms want to use with their students. Those are the three biggest companies the schools choose to go with when they're buying those things.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Mr. Smith, let's see, let me get back down here. That takes us to 9.04, Your Invitation to Bid and RFPs. You have four items before you to include fire solutions. district-wide weather safety monitoring, amplified IT support, and furniture for Jordan's College and Career Academy. Any questions? Seeing none, that takes us to 9.05. This is Purchase Exception Under Professional Services, and you have three items. I did ask for further clarification. Infinite Campus and the works we are familiar with, we've seen them before. Some of the, the third item, which is Fab Arts, Columbus State, let's grow. I wanted to explain that these are items for our summer learning experience activities at our school. Includes teaching as well as student programming. Any questions? Seeing none, that takes us to 9.06. This is your monthly budget adjustments. Any questions? Seeing none, that takes us to 9.07. You have two purchase order increases. Do you have, for gas, I think it was propane fuel, excuse me, and NAPA auto parts. Any questions on those two items? 9.08 is your monthly sales source and volatile purchases. 9.09 is our competitively bid purchases. There are five before you, which includes food products, chemical products, bread products, milk and dairy, and solid waste. Any questions on any of those items? Seeing none, 9.010 is our monthly financial statements. And I apologize, I don't have the number right before me, but the last but not least item is our donations of $27,816.28. And we thank all of our individuals, companies, PTAs, our sororities, our fraternities, our anonymous donors that give every single month to support public education in Muskogee County. We are truly blessed to be in a generous community. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Just want to congratulate a lot of our elementary schools who are part of the Science Olympiad this past weekend at the state level. There are many of them, they'll be recognized going forward, but certainly want to congratulate all of them. Also, making everyone aware, as you know, there are, there is no longer a transportation requirement regarding face masks, so we are no longer having masks on the buses as required. So just want to make that announcement for our general public as well. And also, just want to just recognize all of our retiring employees, many of whom are going to be recognized this Thursday at the retirement banquet. We've missed out on the last couple of years, and we've invited them to return to us to be recognized if they would choose to do so, because we want certainly pay our gratitude to them for their work, whether they're retiring this year or last year. We think they're owed that opportunity. So we do want to thank them for their continued years of service to us and their dedication to our school district. Bingo.
Six o'clock Trade Center Thursday. All right, that concludes, y'all did great, outstanding, and you will have a list of all of the bills that passed, didn't pass, and what's on the radar, if you would take them, so that you will have them as we engage with our public and our constituents who have questions about anything that happened at the legislature. Anything, Ms. Buckner?
I was just going to ask Dr. Lewis, how did testing go through, over the last couple of weeks?
The G-Mass testing.
Well, as you know, this is the first time we've really done this in this kind of environment now for a while, but it went fairly well overall, where there's always glitches someplace with one thing or another. We had a power outage one place or whatever, so there's always that. But overall, the, the reports are, kids are getting back in, getting acclimated to doing, doing that again. It's a, it's a test of stamina in some respects, and it's something that they have not been accustomed to the last couple of years in terms of that lengthy time of testing. But I think overall, things have gone fairly well. Would you agree, Mr. Knopf?
And, and my children said what they always say, "Oh, it was easy."
Which makes me very nervous whenever they say that.
Is there ever any evidence, really, when you get the results, how easy it was?
Yeah, of course, this past, not this week, but last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and certainly all the board members got a chance to recognize them with a video announcement. We sent out some messages, and we can never say enough how much we appreciate what our teachers have done every day, every year, but particularly every day of the last two, two and a half years, whatever it's been now. They have just put, put forth an amazing amount of resilience and commitment that I've not seen ever before, and I. They're tired. And all the more reason, I guess it's probably a good time to say that, as we close out the school year. I hope every parent will take an opportunity at some point or another to thank the people in our schools, whether it's a principal, assistant principal, cafeteria worker, bus driver, teachers. Everyone has worked very, very hard over the last couple of years. And just something as much as just a saying a thank you, or a note, or anything, doesn't have to be any elaborate, just giving some kind of acknowledgement of the work that they've done. And, and I want to say the same to our board members because I appreciate your support for all the decisions, the tough decisions we've had to make over the last couple of years. It has not gone as well in some districts as it has here, and I just am very appreciative of your leadership and your cooperation and collaboration as a governance team. So thank you all very much.
Great team, great team. And we end at Teacher Appreciation Week with me recognizing a finalist for Teacher of the Year that will represent MCSC.
Yeah, we will be bringing forward the Teacher of the Year, but we had, this year, we always have great top 10 Teachers of the Year, but this year was amazing group, and the top three were all, any one of them literally could have been the Teacher of the Year. And I've had every member of the committee at one time or another tell me that this was probably one of the toughest decisions they've had to make, is who would be the, the top Teacher of the Year because any one of them could have been. So we're very fortunate, very blessed to have very talented teachers. Absolutely.
All right. We adjourn. Good night. Thank you, everybody.